Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Thank you for being here at this auspicious hour. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And can we have a roll call?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Joseph?
Here.
Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Suvasan? Vice Mayor Viscara?
Here.
Mayor Goldman?
Here.
All members present.
Okay, the Pledge of Allegiance. Robert, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning?
Thank you for dressing for the occasion.
Good morning, good morning, everyone. Thank you, Honorable. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Our zoning hearing?
Yes. Let me just read the introductory statement and just swear in anyone that needs to speak. In accordance with the city's LDRs, all notices have been published on properties and have been mailed out to the property owners. Anyone that's going to be speaking today, please raise your right arm to be sworn in. Do you swear that testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. And before we commence, are there any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed by any members of the commission?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. Can we also read the companion TDR resolution?
Yes, I'm so sorry, you're correct. So this has a companion item, which is the purchase of TDRs, so which is 4A. Now read that one into the record. A resolution approving the purchase and assignment of transfer development rights in the amount of 313 square feet of floor area ratio and zero dwelling units from the city's public TDR bank account to Sunny Isles Living LP.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. This item is a site plan modification for the mansions at Aquilina project to enclose a balcony within an existing unit. This will only be affecting Unit 602. The applicant is proposing to add 313 square feet of floor area to the unit by enclosing the balcony. If approved, this site plan modification will bring the overall project size of the mansions of Aquilina project to 433,875 square feet of floor area. To increase the floor area ratio, it is accomplished through the Transfer Development Rights Program. The applicant is requesting the purchase and assignment of 313 square feet of floor area and zero dwelling units through the city's public TDR bank. The application is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations. Staff has no objections as long as the conditions listed in the staff report are accepted and approved. The applicant is also present this morning, and we are available if you have any questions.
We, we've, there's a clear and established precedent for, you know, for this particular TDR program and these balcony enclosures, so. I'm, I have no questions. I don't know if any of the other Commissioners have any questions?
I don't have questions.
So, do it, we have no public speakers? No public speakers? So I think just a motion? Are we gonna have just a motion? Okay, do we have a second? Do you want to take a vote, a roll?
A voice vote is fine.
Voice vote?
Yes, all in favor.
All in favor? Aye.
And for the record, this is also for item 4A. 3A, I'm sorry. No, 4A. With the companion item.
That was a squeaker.
Thank you all, as usual, nice and easy. I appreciate everybody's time. I will get with the zoning department. I did notice the amount of TDR that we're requesting. We have a minor miss up there. We're actually asking for 313 instead of 313.
Yeah. Karine, can you, Karine?
Can you speak into, can you come up to the podium and speak for the record?
Good morning, everybody. Again, thank you so much for all of you being here this morning. I was just mentioning I will get with the zoning department this afternoon if I can catch up with her. There's a tiny discrepancy on the amount of square footage that we're requesting. For the record, she was asking for 313 square feet, and it's actually 308. So it's minus five. I'll get with her so that we can fix anything we need to fix. It's for the plan.
Can we just get a consensus from the commission that it's, that the approval is for 308 square feet versus 313?
Sure. Do we need, want a consensus or you want a motion to amend the, amend the?
Yeah, let's do that. A motion to amend to reduce it from 313 to 308.
Can we have a motion to amend to reduce from 313 to 308 feet? Do we have a motion? Okay. Commissioner Stivison, second. Commissioner Lama, all in favor? Aye. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you again. I appreciate amending and fixing it immediately. This is the quick fix. Thank you and have a great day, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, well, next, next item. So 3A and 4A are combined. Now we're on to item 4B.
Yes. 4B is a resolution appointing Hafed Launberg and Stephen Watson as special magistrates. So this is being presented to you, Mayor, in accordance with our, our chart, our code, which basically calls that any appointments to special magistrates need to be ratified by the commission. So the city manager has proffered Laun, Launberg, excuse me, and Stephen Watson. They're both have extensive knowledge in the field of municipal law, and both are currently serving as special magistrates in different municipalities.
Yes, I've read their CVs, and I see a nod of approval from our city attorney. We're all good?
Yeah, as if I had, if, I don't have any input in this. It's, it's really the city manager's appointment, but I certainly have no objection.
Yes, I think I've spoken in the past with one of the, on, on real estate, so. I'm, I'm comfortable, and unless we have any other comments or questions or objections, I'd like to see a motion.
Well, I'd like to say I reviewed the resumes. That was the best that I could do. I don't know the gentleman personally, but from their resumes, I, I would say that they are, they would probably and are doing a very good job.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Joseph. So that being said, unless we have any other comments? So we have a motion? Can we have a motions? So moved, Commissioner Lama, motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Joseph, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Vice Mayor Viscara. Thanks, thanks. Okay. We're moving along to item 4C.
4C is a resolution accepting a grant award from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Office of Resilience, and Coastal Protection for the Central Island Drainage Improvements Project.
Good, I was gonna say good evening, but it's good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. This grant was applied for by previous administration. The award was received shortly after I came back to the city. I believe we were notified it was coming in January of 2022. So they would like a formal acceptance by the commission of the grant. It is a $2 million grant from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to be used for the Central Island Pump Stations and Drainage Improvements Project that we will be doing in accordance or in combination with North Miami Beach's Water Main Improvement Project. We're gonna try to do them at the same time so that we don't tear things up twice. And it'll be $2 million coming from them with a $2 million local match.
And this encompasses the flooding that we're having on North Bay Road?
That is the purpose of the project, is to start to alleviate the concerns of flooding within the whole central island, including North Bay Road, yes.
Okay, so we have no, we have no public speakers, correct? Okay. Yeah, so we're very pleased to see us moving forward, and it's, it's wonderful to have this level of grants. So kudos to the city for perfecting this. A $2 million grant is a very significant matching fund and, you know, in furtherance of our, of our stormwater and resiliency efforts. So very, very happy to see this. This is a real, a windfall, so to speak, to have this level of matching grants.
Definitely positive for the city.
Yes, absolutely. So any other comments about this particular project or questions?
I can't wait for it to.
We always say as.
It's greatly needed and it's great that we're getting this grant. So I'm not my fault. We're ready to make this happen.
And how long? How long before we can get this? How long? How long? Commissioners, Stivison, how long?
The grant goes through December of 2026. The design is in the works right now, and all of the coordinating efforts have begun with North Miami Beach. So we anticipate starting as soon as we can make this all happen. Not this fiscal year. I believe the actual construction won't start till next year.
I'm sure we've all received complaints about the flooding and, and this, in this particular area. And this is a long time coming to get this, get this implemented, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks to the city for getting this.
We'll watch the calendar. Everyone will be watching the calendar.
Okay. So with that being said, do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Lama, Commissioner Stivison, seconds? Do we, we don't need a roll call, roll vote, a voice vote, correct? We just all in favor? Aye. All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor Viscara. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Audrey.
Okay, item 4D.
4D is a resolution approving a First Amendment to the agreement with the Coradino Group for Planning and Zoning Services.
To have any, thank you.
Hello, I'm here respectfully requesting an authorization from the commission to approve the study of the city's shuttle system. The last one that was done was done in 2005, and since then, we've had a lot of innovations in mobility. So the study will basically.
I'm sorry. Could I ask you, please, to speak up? I'm sure other people are also having a problem hearing you.
And since we're taking a break.
Can you state your name and so we?
My name is.
Go ahead.
Name is George Del Nez. I'm the new transportation manager for the city of Sunny Isles Beach, and I'm respectfully requesting approval of this transit study from Coradino Group to check out the, the current system since the last evaluation of the system was done in 2005. Since then, there's been a lot of transit, mobility studies, and just innovations within mobility. So we need to catch up to see if we can remove some vehicles off the road, basically. And we can do that by either on-demand services, electric vehicles. So there, there's a lot of technology out there that we need to look at.
Excellent. So of course, I, as part of our interest is, you know, are we going to augment our transportation with on-demand? And I think this dovetails nicely into this, this study, right?
Yes.
So I think it's, it's great for us to have a top-down evaluation of our traffic and our traffic counts and our needs and overall connectivity, so.
And we could look at possibly going outside the city and having inter-local agreements with other municipalities that are adjacent to ours and see if we can pool some of those resources.
Absolutely. Certainly something that I personally am highly interested in, as you, as you know. So thank you so much. I, I think this is well-needed, well-worthwhile. We have no, if we do have comments from the commission on this?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Thank you. And I have the floor with no interruptions this time around? Thank you. Okay. So my first question is, and I understand that the $150,000 was. The $150,000 still? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe the volume needs, can the volume be raised? No? Okay. So the original $150,000 was approved in January, unfortunately, prior to my being elected. So I had no means of questioning that. But now, you said regarding coordination with other transit situations that we have currently. So you would be coordinating with the county? Because I know they're revising their buses as well.
Well, Coradino will be looking at all possibilities. It's not, I'm gonna be looking at it. Coradino will be doing the study.
Okay, so you're not with Coradino Group?
No, I'm not.
He's, he's an employee of the city.
Oh, okay. So why, and you work along with who else in the city?
So.
Susan and Audra.
He, transportation has been under the Cultural and Community Services Department, and was, he was working with Sylvia. We recently, like just yesterday, the day before, transitioned it to work under Audra.
Right.
But this, this, this was budgeted this fiscal year to do this study, and that was presented by Sylvia during the last budget session.
Okay. Now, how did we come up with these numbers? That the 55 and the 85? How did that come in?
The 55, 9250, or whatever that exact number is.
Because now we're at.
55, 950.
290,000.
Okay. So let me go back a little bit. The original $150,000 was for, we went out for an RFQ for planning and zoning services, which we have always had. They do the other disciplines that we don't have specialists in the city to do.
Right.
So for big projects, they, you know, traffic engineering and other things, landscape.
That we don't have the expertise.
Correct. So, and most of that is reimbursable through the applicant. So we, but we still have to pay the check in the first place. So we always ask for what we expect it to be for that first term, that, that first year.
That's the 150.
That's the 150,000. Yes, that was for the planning and zoning services only. This particular company has, they do the.
Now, how did we come up with 150? Just so I can have some history on this.
Based on, based on historical spend and based on the projects we expected to come before us this year.
Can you clarify again? That's reimbursable? Because we're, we're talking apples to oranges. Those are planning and zoning, and it has nothing to do with the traffic analysis.
Correct. So, but because it's an amendment to the agreement, not a separate agreement, it's all lumped into, it's one agreement because it's still a study, it's still planning, it's traffic planning.
And we've always farmed these out? We never had the ability in the city?
We have always farmed out that particular work, yes. And prior to it being the Coradino Group, it was Calvin Giordano Associates. So for the other meetings that you've attended, you would see a representative when Claudia would come up. There'd be a representative from CGA that would also give some information.
So when we had Claudia, she had been with the city for years?
Yes.
She was qualified to do some of these studies in-house or no?
No. No. Even if Claudia was here, this would be, this would be contracted out. So, so we went out for an RFQ. We ranked everybody. It's CCNA, and we used them. We ranked Coradino. We entered into an agreement with them for any of those services that fell within that bid. This study happens to fall within that bid. And they gave us a very fair price. We had budgeted $60,000. They came in at 55, 950, thanks to Genesis and her negotiations. And so we think it's a solid study. We're gonna get some great results. You had previously asked about the timing of it with Brightline coming and the county potentially making some changes.
Just so that we don't have redo and additional expenses.
Correct. So the plan is that we will, Coradino Group will be working with all of those other agencies. They're, they're gonna look at this holistically. They're gonna look at everything that's trending, what's new out there, things that we don't even know of yet. And then in it, so that's the 55, 950, which again, we think is a very fair price, very comprehensive. We need this study. We've been putting it off for a couple of years.
Well, I understand. So we haven't had one of these assessments since 2005? So it's well overdue?
Yes.
2015. 2015.
The gentleman said 2005 earlier.
15.
2005, yeah.
So 2005 or 15? Okay. Because we did the transportation study, the master plan.
But the last time we looked at the shuttle service was 2005.
Oh, the two, the shuttle service was 2005.
The route has not been really amended. We've done some in-house tweaks, but not a full-scale study of, you know, how effective it is? Are we hitting the right spots? It's been a lot of, you know, resident feedback where somebody calls and says, I want the bus to come to my house, you know, and we try to accommodate as best we can. It may not be the most efficient way to do it.
And Coradino is going to be looking for resident input?
Absolutely, yes. It's included in their, in their package.
Okay.
What about the 85,000 additional?
So the 85,000 additional is, because we did lose Claudia and Jennifer almost immediately after getting this contract, and we only had one person left in the PNC department, we had to contract with Coradino to actually have in-house people. So the planning and zoning in this city did not stop. And I know a lot of people think that, you know, because you see Claudia for, you would see Claudia for the big developments, you know, or a balcony enclosure. But there's so many everyday, day-to-day things that they have to go through, you know, for somebody to open a business or, you know, even a single-family home renovation, things like that. So all of that work, we needed somebody to do it. Coradino was qualified. We had already contracted with them. So they gave us two people to get us through that time. We've now hired Amy, who had just presented, so we can scale that, that, that spending back. You know, we're hoping by half. So this is an estimate. The $85,000 is to cover where we are today plus what we need to get through February of 2023 when the contract renews.
So we had Mario here, correct? The, from Mario several days a week? And Scarlett?
Right.
For cup, here onsite, again, doing the day-to-day work of.
Yes, to not hold up anything.
Just everyday work? So it was not as if, you know, it was not, it was actually serving de facto?
Oh, absolutely. It was like having two other employees without paying employee tax, benefits, retirement, and everything else.
I, I think the 55, 950 are very clear. And if we need the study, if we need it, we need it. I wish that the maps I could make it or somebody else, but if we need them to do it, and it's paramount to whatever is gonna be the, the changes that we have to do to, to the service, I think it is necessary. I read, and you guys are gonna be even considering the school and all of that. And I hope it's not. Okay, we will talk about, about that in another moment.
This is, yeah. This is.
Correct. But, but the $85,000, I really will need a little bit more of clarification for that. If anything, I will feel with emotion passing the 55, 950 and deferring the additional for another moment.
So if we defer the $85,000, we do have an outstanding bill with Coradino right now for what they have done so far for the month of July?
Do you have an estimate of how much of that is reimbursable from the, you know, from the, or do you have a ballpark or?
I do not. The only big project, you know, I mean, the time that was spent just on this balcony enclosure, that's reimbursable. There, a lot of effort went into, a lot of time went into the Thunderbird West application. That is all reimbursable. So I couldn't even guess. Amy, can you? Did you get a chance to look at that yet?
That would be relative to the $80,000, you know?
Well, the 85 is prospect, that is to get us through, that's future money. The 150 is what we've already spent.
Okay.
So we spent the totality of the?
Totality of the 150. So if you don't approve this, Scarlett has to go home and never come back, despite any transition that we need to have still with Amy, and we would lose Mario. So no inspections would happen. Continuity, and we need to keep, I mean, literally, we still only have Amy. We don't have Mario. So without an approval of, if you don't wanna go to 85 and you wanna make it 50 or something less till we can get back to you. But we will only spend what we actually need. We're not going to spend the full, we hope to not spend the full 85. We hope to come back to you and say, you know, at the renewal, we need less because we'll have some carryover. But we won't know that because we don't know what's coming in the next couple of months. And you're going on break, which is why this was on here now because we really don't wanna do anything without your approval. We don't have to.
Amy, can you create some?
Sure. So Susan mentioned the two applications that Coradino was working on, which was the Thunderbird West application, which didn't make it to hearing, and this balcony enclosure. I don't have a good estimate as how much money that is reimbursable from that. But also, a good point is that we, the city does need to pay for that upfront, and then the applicant pays, reimburses the city later. So that's why this 85 is needed now so we can keep, continue their services. And then we'll collect the funds from the applicants at a later date.
And didn't the budget, it does kind of show that way as a breakdown? I mean, it is an expense for us to pay it out in the first place.
Yeah, but we don't know if we're gonna collect the totality of the 85 because not everything is gonna be reimbursable.
We definitely will not collect the totality of the 85. Absolutely not.
Correct, yeah.
There's so many other things that they do that is not reimbursable.
But, but again, this is, we're talking about a three-month gap. How, what was the gap between when Claudia and, and now, when we've brought, when we've onboarded?
I was gonna say, I think Jennifer left in March. I think we got, we got Mario first, and then we got Scarlett when, when Claudia left. And again, this is getting us through February of 2023. If you wanna allocate funds just to get us through this fiscal year, but then we have to come back to you in September, October.
I really will feel more comfortable scaling it back a little bit. We're gonna be here again in September. So in we, you will have a lot more time to, you know, being able to review everything, have better numbers, et cetera. It's just I really don't feel comfortable with.
Can I just add something, though? Understand that giving you that report of what's reimbursable, we're still going to have to ask for 85 because we're still going to, we still have to pay out that money upfront to get reimbursed, and we still need your approval to be able to spend that money to get reimbursed. So waiting does not change the number. I, it's not like I can come back to you in September and say, oh, we only need forty thousand instead. That, that won't be the case, because we still have to spend it to get it back.
Okay. I mean, we're here really about this traffic analysis, right? I mean, we need to kind of move forward with.
Yes.
Mobility and connectivity and understand our circulator system. For me, that's really the, the, the important issue here. Is like, we, we really wanna move forward quickly or effectively, uh, with that, with that study, right? We need to get going, because, you know, again, we're, we're moving towards some on-demand. We have questions about our circulator system. And, um, I think we need, we, we need to get this, we need to get this accomplished, right?
So the reason this had to come to you is because this is about spending authority with Coradino as an overall whole. That's why this got all wrapped into one. We could not, uh, not come to you. There was just enough money left not spent that we could have done the transportation study without coming back to you, but then I would have eaten up Amy's money to do it. Therefore, it had to come to you today. Basically, we had to approve the study itself and increase the spending authority to make sure that this could occur. So we, we, i- it ended up wrapping into one, and I apologize, Commissioner Suvisant, for having to bring it in this manner, but in order for them to proceed, this has been in their budget, and it needs to be done before the end of the fiscal year, get started, so that we don't lose those budgeted funds.
So do we know, Audra, is the county also doing a similar study at this time?
Susan, I'm not aware of any such thing that would directly.
My, my understanding is that the county is scaling back their routes, uh, within Sunny Isles.
Okay.
I, I don't know exactly which ones, but that, that is taking place. Uh, they're, they're cutting down on, um, on, on actual bus stops. So, you know, th- there is gonna be an impact. What that impact is, I, I can't tell you at this point.
They wouldn't do an analysis of our, our circulator. It's not the county's, it's, it's not the jurisdiction of the county.
If we have a lack of service from the county.
It's not about the ser- it's, it's not about the service from the county, it's about our internal service, our circulator system, on-demand connectivity and mobility. It's not, it's not about the county. In other words, we're not evaluating the county bus route system. We're evaluating our shuttle buses, our, uh, demand.
But to some degree, isn't there an overlap?
No, not, not internally.
He may be referring because he spoke about an inter-local agreement, but I think this has to do with the cities, the cities and the surrounding cities, um, own transportation, that's a capability.
Like Freebie from Aventura, like using Freebie, for example, where our Freebie, if we were to use Freebie, our Freebie getting, getting a stop at FIU, or our, our Freebie on-demand services going, traversing outside of our jurisdictional limits to go elsewhere, to create greater connectivity amongst the cities. But that's doesn't, that doesn't impact what the county, the, right, the county, we're talking about the county bus system, and Brightline is not even county, right? It's not run by the county.
Well, with, with.
Right. So it's, so it's really about the eff- efficiency of our, 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 our buses, our vehicles.
No, but Coradino is going to consider the overall aspect of transportation.
With, with your concern about the county, uh, vacating areas.
Yes.
I understand that that, that's gonna be a, a possibility, and within that realm, this study can also, uh, look at areas that have been vacated by the county.
But is that what you were considering doing, or?
Well, that, that's gonna be the whole, the whole scope of the, of the whole scope of the study. But obviously, if the county is vacating an area, is because that area doesn't promote or is not subjected to, uh, ridership. So, you know, tho- those are things that is gonna be looked at, you know, as a whole, not as a, as a, as a piece.
Right. Okay, so you're coordinating all, you would be coordinating all of that in your considerations?
Well, Coradino Group, not, he's with the city, he's our.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, what we're discussing is that we don't have a representative from Coradino here today, which I thought we would.
Technically, Scarlett is from Coradino Group.
Scarlett, you wanna stand up and say?
Hi, um, hi, Scarlett Hammond with the Coradino Group. I, um, I'm not, um, very familiar with this study. I have, um, however, done similar studies in the past. So, um, I could say that, um, everything, um, as he's describing, um, that we would, um, present, um, we would review, um, the routes that you're doing right now, and, um, ridership, um, what, how, how it's being used, um, and also coordinate, of course, with Aventura. Of course, there's a very large impact, um, coming with the Brightline that's gonna change how transportation is gonna happen in this area significantly. And I think that that is definitely gonna be a major focus of this study, so how.
And it has nothing to do with you.
Oh, okay.
Why, uh, for this amount of dollars, why would Coradino not have someone here today that's familiar with the study?
That's totally my fault, Commissioner. I'm sorry. I thought that we could handle all of the questions. I have participated in a Coradino study, um, with a different city, as in, they were doing a study for another city, North Miami Beach, and they call in all the other municipalities, a representative from every municipality to sit on that study and provide feedback and input, and that's how we got our connectivity to the NMB line at Winn-Dixie. So my apologies, and I was talking to Amy yesterday, and we talked about calling in, um, calling Joe yesterday, and I literally just never had a chance until about nine o'clock last night.
So maybe, I know it's unfortunate with the dollar amounts and all and, uh, what's owing, but, and it's unfortunate that we have the break for August.
What, what specifically? I'm sorry, but what specifically is the question? Because I think I can answer it.
Just, you know, to have someone familiar with the program that they're getting paid for to answer any questions at all.
Sure. And I can tell you for sure that it's definitely our company policy, um, to always be present when we have a contract on, on a, an agenda, and I, I, I just wasn't aware that this was coming forward today.
Yeah, like I said, it's nothing against.
I would have, I would have, I would have been prepared. I, I'm very sorry. I, I did not know. I, I definitely would have been prepared, um, had the scope in front of me and, and would have familiarized myself with it to answer any questions for you. I'm sorry. That, that, that is definitely our company policy and, and going forward.
It just puts us at a disadvantage, because now we're being asked to go ahead with funding, and, you know, we don't have the ability to get any answers.
It is a very detailed scope, and if you, um, ask a specific question, we could, I think between Scarlett and I, we could definitely answer it.
Yes.
So, so for me.
If I had a copy of it.
So for me, it's very, you know, I, we have a budgeted item, correct, to do this traffic analysis and study?
Sixty thousand dollars.
Right, and we have an absolute need to get this study moving forward and accomplished. For me, that's the issue. I don't know if we can get additional detail, we can get the approval and then get additional detail about the other items that the other commissioners are requesting. But for me, this traffic analysis is pretty straightforward. It's a budgeted item, it's a needed study, it's within the scope and within, lower than what we've budgeted for. So for me, it's a very straightforward, we should move forward with the approval of this. But again, if there are other questions about what's, you know, what scope of services preceded this, and what reimbursable activities, and what the length of time that, you know, Coradino filled in in planning and zoning, for me, that's the, that's, you know, it can be fulfilled, but it's the secondary issue. I'm just, I just would like to see this, this traffic study moving forward, because I think it's for the great, uh, benefit of the city. And it's a, again, it's a budgeted item.
And this is a six-month pros- process, process, sorry. So, you know, delaying it is really gonna put us behind the eight ball, because we're really trying to, you know, it, it's not a quick thing, um, it takes time, and then implementing the change takes time, so.
If I may?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Um, I mean, I think we have to pick our poison, right? So we're, we're talking about, we're always focused on pedestrian safety, on improved services, getting, uh, improving traffic, getting cars off the road. Those are all goals that we want to accomplish. And improving our internal bus service would do that. It puts the pedestrian at the center of the conversation. It potentially removes cars off the road. If we can get our residents on a bus to more locations or improve our ridership, that's all in service of the community. It is in the budget. I really don't see the problem. Um, I mean, I can, I understand Commissioner Joseph's desire to ask questions to a particular person, but if that person is not there and others are there who can answer the question, then, then let's discuss the question. But I don't see, I don't see why we, we, we need to slow something down that is, that is appropriate and budgeted, um, and in service of, of the broader goal of, of servicing the, our pedestrians and our community. I think, um, it sounds to me like, like, uh, Susan and her team have done their job. They're prepared to answer questions, uh, if they are asked. Um, I mean, I, I think this is, I think this is entirely appropriate. Uh, in my experience with the Coradino Group, you know, they jumped in there, they've, they've done their job. I've been very satisfied with the service they provided. Uh, they allowed our, our departments to, to continue functioning in a professional way. But I can tell, of course, I'm not in the nitty-gritty of it, uh, you know, but it seems like the services, you know, were able to continue uninterrupted and provided in a professional way. So, uh, I mean, I'm in support of this item. I, I just don't see, I don't understand the, I just don't understand the, the, you know, the stepping on the brakes on this item. But that was, those are my two cents.
Thank you. I think you provided some important commentary on this, uh, subject. So I don't, unless there are any other questions, if we can entertain a motion?
I just wanna say that, um, I believe, before I open the discussion, that this item was ready to be rubber-stamped without any questioning whatsoever. And I'm glad for the questions that were asked and answered, and I hope that the residents, uh, feel more comfortable with the spend and the result that will be.
Thank you. And that being said, can I have a, can, can we have a motion? Uh, Commissioner Lama has, has motion? And do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Commissioner Joseph has second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote no.
Oh, okay. So four to one, the motion passes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that being, do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye.